Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting for February 19th, 2013, and if we could have roll call. And you'll have to forgive our clerk. She's under the weather with a bad cold, so I hope everyone can hear her.
I'll try to talk loud. Mayor Protem Seneca.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Finance Director Parker. I know he's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. He is making additional copies of the agenda. We ran out of copies, so if anybody in the audience didn't get a copy, we'll have some more on the back in just a minute. He'll be joining us shortly.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
And Village Planner Ziegler.
Here.
And Attorney Zemanek. I guess I forgot to call you. You're at the bottom of the page.
Thank you. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, under reports, I have just a couple of things. First, I just wanted to alert all of our residents. You will be receiving your first inaugural edition of the Westmont Neighbors Magazine this week. They should be mailed out probably yesterday or today. It's just wonderful. Has a wealth of information in it, very informative, covers all of the different taxing bodies, things going on in town. It's going to be really good for everyone as far as communication tools. So look for that. It's great. And then I wanted to wish a happy belated birthday to Trustee Klebenow. She had a birthday this weekend, so happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I have, we have a brief announcement from Lion Chris Svitak, who is here this evening, and he's going to take just a couple of minutes of our time for a quick, it's breaking news. This is Westmont breaking news.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem, Village Board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. As you all know, the Westmont Lions Club put on the red, white, and barbecue every year, and this year is no exception. Again, we thank you all for, you know, supporting it. But this year is even more special than any past year. We've dealt with torrential rain. We've dealt with cold. Last year, good God, the heat. So we've done everything possible, or so we thought. This year, about three weeks ago, I received a phone call. And I was talking to this girl on the phone, and I said, well, I said, you know, honestly, this is a phone call I've been waiting for five years. And last week, we were actually approved, the Westmont Lions Club, the barbecue, the village, and the park district are all going to be featured on the TV program, Barbecue Pit Masters. So they will be here. They will be filming. So tell everybody, come on out, check them out. Some of the guys really like to meet people. And who knows? You could get your 10 seconds of fame. You never know. But that is the big thing, that the TV program, Barbecue Pit Masters, is coming to Westmont this year.
That's pretty good. Thank you.
It's going to be a good time.
Thank you. And I'm sure you'll be back to remind us as.
I'm sure I will. Just put it on your calendar, May 24th to the 26th, all right? And thank you very much for the time tonight.
Thanks, Chris.
All right.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Clerk?
I have a few items. First of all, I wanted to congratulate that Taiwan Cultural Center on their wonderful ribbon cutting on Saturday. Those people are just wonderful. They enjoy Westmont so much and put on quite a show force. It was very, very nice. And then I wanted to congratulate our Westmont High School Boys Basketball Team. They lost last night, but they really did have a good season, so.
A winning season.
And I wanted to remind everybody of the open house at the Chamber of Commerce tomorrow at One South Cass from 5:00 to 7:00. And then also that the Progressive Village Performance Network will be doing the Frozen Film Festival this weekend, which are local films done right here or in the area. And it'll be on Friday from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m., 1:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and I believe it's 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday at the community center. So go over and enjoy these films. They've got a lot, so. And that's all I have tonight.
Great, thank you. Attorneys Zemanek.
Nothing, ma'am.
Thank you. Manager Searle.
Nothing.
Thank you. Okay, we will move right on to the consent agenda. We have nothing to be pulled off this evening, so with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seneca.
Yes. Thank you. Public hearing, continued public hearing for the Southwestmont Business District TIF, board to continue and continue to conduct a public hearing for the Southwestmont Business District Tax Increment Financing District on Tuesday, February 19th, 2013, at 7:00, which is now. So I'll read some brief notes, and then we will continue on with it. This continued public hearing will please come to order. This is a continuation of the February 4th, 2013, public hearing that has been called by the Village Board to hear public comments regarding the adoption of the Southwestmont Business Development District. On December 17th, 2012, the Village Board adopted an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Date, Time, and Place for a Public Hearing Pertaining to the Southwestmont Business District Tax Increment Financing District," calling for a public hearing to establish a Tax Increment Financing, TIF, district known as the Southwestmont Business Development District, SWBD. Notice of the February 4th, 2013, public hearing was published in the Westmont Progress on January 9th, 2013, and January 16th, 2013. On January 25th, 2013, a copy of this notice was mailed to the person or persons in whose name the general taxes for the last preceding year were paid on each lot, block, tract, or parcel lying with the SWBD. In the event taxes for the last preceding year were not paid, this notice was mailed to the persons last listed on the tax rolls within the preceding three years as owner of the property. The public hearing opened on February 4th, 2013, and was continued to today, February 19th, 2013. As part of the TIF Act requirements, notice of the establishment of a Joint Review Board, JRB, was sent to each community college district, local elementary school district and high school, park district, library district, township, and county on December 18th, 2012. The JRB held two meetings, and a resolution has been signed and submitted by the JRB of its non-binding recommendation, which is made part of the record of this hearing. I will ask the village clerk if she has received any written correspondence on this matter. Staff and Tesca Associates will be presenting a summary of the TIF district and any updates to the plan, project, and project area. I will then ask if any member of the Village Board wishes to make a statement or ask a question. There will then be an opportunity for members of the public to make objections or give statements or comments, or to submit written statements, objections, or comments for the record. Thereafter, I will ask for a motion to close and adjourn this hearing. At this hearing, witnesses will not be sworn, and a written transcript of the statements or testimony given at the hearing will not be prepared. However, a video recording of the procedures will be made on village equipment and retained until minutes of the hearing have been prepared and approved by the Village Board. At the last board meeting, the JRB recommendation, which was favorable, was adopted by motion. I'm now going to turn it over to Ron Searle, our manager, to take it from here.
Thank you. And just briefly, I want to introduce the presenters this evening. We have our acting community development director, who will introduce our consultant. Con Savoy is here from Tesca. If you want to make any opening comments, Shannon.
Thank you, Village Board Manager Searle. I'm very pleased this evening to introduce Konstantin Savoy, Principal at Tesca Associates, who will be making a presentation on the Southwestmont Business District. We're going to be discussing the boundaries of the proposed district, giving a little bit of background about the eligibility and what TIF is, and then opening it up for public comment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Con.
Good to be back with you. As many of you know, and probably some in the audience are aware, this project has been long in coming. There's been a lot of hours and effort put into making this happen and getting to the point where we are. I've had the good fortune to be the Village's TIF consultant through this process, but I've been supported by, and I know staff has put a lot of hours in to this process, as well as, I think, Shannon, Spencer, Ron, and others who have been part of this process. Tonight, I have a brief presentation that I will provide to give an overview, as Shannon suggested, about what TIF is, where we are in terms of the proposal that the Village Board is considering, and then we will entertain any comments. Okay. Well, I thought maybe I was going to give a presentation. I got a blank screen. That's interesting. Any ideas?
Do we have to go back to the other view? Can you escape out?
Yeah. That is interesting. Oh, you know, I think I know why it's referencing.
Technical difficulty.
That's right. Have to look at a different file location. There we go. Continue, save later. Now, see, how did we do this?
The V menu.
No, it's not in this view. It's here. Does that work? I don't know if I can.
Can you right-click on it?
Yeah.
Slideshow, there it is.
Oh, this is the PowerPoint. Okay. There you go.
It's only beginning.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. All right.
We're good to go?
Yeah, I've got it all figured out. Sorry about that. The project boundary, one of the most important things, and I'm sorry for people in the audience, I'm turning my back to you, but one of the most important things as a result of the year and a half process that we've taken to get to this point, as many of you know, the village has been in negotiations with school district number 60 marker, school district, to address objections over a district which was originally proposed, and many of you may remember, which is a much larger district, a district that included most of the commercial property, you can't see on this map on the screen, for property south of 63rd Street. Recently, and I believe maybe up for tonight, is the formal, what I understand to be the approval of an agreement whereby the village and the school district have come to an agreement where the school district is withdrawing its objections to what is now before you up on that screen, a district that is roughly, well, I don't know in terms of area, but essentially half in size, meaning that it's only an area north of 63rd Street. Everything south of 63rd Street is now not in the TIF district. Excuse me. The timeline, what's been happening, and I think it's important to keep in context what this project is all about. This is not a new idea. I've said this many times before, but the redevelopment, the revitalization, the desire to see new development in the business district along 63rd and Cass has been dated, could be dated back to 2004, where the village did a market study and followed up with the establishment of what's called a business district and commercial rezoning for the area. And the village initiated the TIF study in 2011, and then as recently, and as I understand, tonight going to be adopting the Comprehensive Plan update, which in the Comprehensive Plan also supports the idea of redevelopment of the Southwestmont Business District and revitalization, and does recommend the use of TIF for this area. So not only do we have a long history of the village's desire and commitment to see revitalization in the area, my understanding, anyone who's been around long enough to see what has happened since 2004, you can see the gradual decline to a state where today you have high vacancies, dilapidation, deterioration, and so forth and so on of businesses. So where are we and what is tax increment financing? Fundamentally, tax increment financing is a tool, a financial tool, that provides incentives for development and also provides a revenue source that the village can use to do public improvements within an area. In this case, the area north of 63rd. It's an implementation tool that must comply with an adopted plan, and it's important here. Again, I made reference to the village's and hope to soon-to-be-adopted new comprehensive plan that maybe many of you have already participated in. This, again, is simply a tool to achieve the objectives, the goals, that are also articulated in your comprehensive plan. The funds are limited by state statutes in terms of what we can use the dollars that come into the TIF fund for. Fundamentally, we can not use them for new construction. We cannot use them for building municipal buildings and a few other restrictions as well. TIF uses the public improvements, meaning the revenues that the village gets through the improvement of this area, that money can be used to improve the area. Therefore, through those improvements, the hope is that will then attract new investment. All taxing districts at the end of this process, and we have established by statute in the plan that this district will be extended to 23 years. It certainly could be ended prior to that time, but I anticipate probably being extended to 23 years. At that time, when the TIF district is completed, all taxing districts then will enjoy a much significant increase in their revenue and their tax base. One important thing I want to point out, and there's several misunderstandings of what TIF is and what it isn't. TIF is not a tax. It does not create any additional tax onto a property owner, nor is it a tax freeze. It doesn't provide tax relief to a property owner. You continue to pay taxes as you have been paying them, and likely will see increases over time as well as you have in the past. TIF does not provide direct funding for new construction. I've mentioned that before. So what does it look like in a graphic form? How is it summarized? I think I'll use this cursor if I can pull it up to describe. The base EAV, all of the dollars that are currently available to all taxing districts, we call the base, meaning the assessed value of properties in, in this case, it was the 2011 assessed values, the 2012 will be coming out soon, but whatever that base is, that base will continue to go to all the taxing districts, meaning the revenue from that tax base, the tax revenue, will continue to go to all taxing districts. So we are not, in a sense, taking away the dollars that the school districts, all the other taxing districts are currently receiving, and of course, that includes the village. What happens with TIF, once that base is frozen, let's say the 2011 base, whatever that number is, all the new revenue that happens as a result of development goes into a TIF fund, and that's represented by this area here. So here's the base. Any new revenue that increases over time, which we hope to see, all this new revenue in that area will then go to the TIF fund to be used for the public improvements that we're talking about. So that at the end of 23 years, what you have is then all that revenue, all that new revenue generated, plus the base revenue that's currently going to the taxing districts, is then distributed to all the taxing districts, and therefore, everyone enjoys a significant benefit over time. Public investment. Have a chart here that shows you what the TIF process is generally and how it works. When we invest into public improvements, when we invest our dollars into incentives for development, we hope to see new development that generates increased property values. It's that increased property values. The way I like to think about this is it's almost private development financing itself, because what happens is that the development, the increase in property values, and the monies that are used as a result of that increase in property values, is captured by the village to then reinvest into the same area in terms of either giving back assistance to a developer to overcome some of the development costs associated with that project, or to assist the village in doing public improvements, sewer projects, road projects, street widening projects, streetscape projects. Therefore, the tax increment revenues pay for those public investments, and, oops, going the other way, and that generates new dollars available for public investment that cycles back hopefully into new private investment, that new private investment. So you can see how this cycle continues, and what we would like to see over time, and certainly what we hope to see over time, is new investment and growing tax base in the village. When you look at it a different way and break it down in terms of what potential numbers might look like, we have property values. These are just fictitious numbers, but just a way to illustrate what happens in a tax increment financing district. In 2012, we'll use this number as a property base. We have $3 million. If at the end of the district, in this case, it would actually be 20, well, beyond 2021, but at the end of the TIF district, let's say that increases to $9 million, so we have a $6 million increase in property value. Well, we're getting in taxes to the taxing districts, let's say, $15,000 currently. At the end of the life of the TIF district, we will receive, and these are, again, fictitious numbers, let's say it's $215,000. So it's that net, it's that $200,000 that comes to the TIF district, to the TIF fund that can be used for improvements in the district and the development systems I talked about. So that's what we call about the tax increment. The increment is that $200,000 difference. The existing base, those existing taxes, $15,000, those continue to be distributed to the taxing districts. Now, what are the eligible public improvements? Well, there are several kinds of public improvements that can be made in a district: street reconstruction, streetscape enhancements, street trees, pedestrian lighting, highway lighting, sidewalk improvements, landscape improvements, water and sewer utilities, and there are several in the area, stormwater being one of the most significant deficiencies in this area in addition to water improvements, bike paths, sidewalk improvements, including other public purposes. It could also be used for private properties, facade improvements, rehab, reconstruction, repair of existing improvements, parking improvements. If there's environmental issues on properties, the cleanup of those properties can be funded through the assistance of TIF, and then property assembly. As many of you know, the village has already purchased one of those key pieces north of 63rd and hopes to now see redevelopment. So the point I want to make here is, again, for property owners and existing businesses in the community, this is not just about encouraging new development and funding new projects. This is about helping you do better with what you have and what you do as a business in this town. There are several criteria that the statute asks us to look at when we undertake a TIF district. There are 13, actually, such criteria. In the amended report, which I forgot to mention right up front, one of the things we had to do is amend the report, because the district is, as I said, about half of where we were when we started out, and the board now has a copy, and a copy is on file with the village. Based on this amended district, and based on the eligibility work that we had did and the survey work we had done before, we now have a district that qualifies, has eight qualifying criterias, and the statute requires only five of 13 qualifying criteria to be present to establish what is called a blighted area. It so happens, what's interesting to the board, this area actually now qualifies as a conservation area as well. So we don't need it, but it's interesting to know that, let me say, I just have a very high level of assurance that this will be eligible, or is eligible. The land use plan and the reference to the village's comprehensive plan is important, as I stated before. We have to have consistency. The excerpt of the village comprehensive plan on the screen shows the recommendation for continued commercial development and revitalization, particularly at one of the key corners at the northwest intersection of 63rd and Cass, where the old shopping center is, and the AT&amp;T and some other older uses. The statutes also require us to put a redevelopment plan together, similar to what the comprehensive plan did for the community. We identified eight different potential redevelopment sites within this TIF area. All of these sites have various levels of what I'll call commercial development, meaning either retail or office, and these are described in more detail in the plan itself. The statute requires us to establish a budget, and we have worked with staff to begin to understand several things about what it'll take to improve this area and to facilitate the development, if you will, to create the incentives necessary to bring development into the area. It includes such things as property assembly, acquisition, potential environmental studies, engineering costs, architectural services, rehabilitation, as I mentioned before, streetscape improvements, and then road utility and remediation. We have a district that with those improvements would total about a little over $127 million. Now, what's important about that is that there is never going to be enough money in this TIF district likely to support all those improvements. So the reality is, the village is still going to have to draw on its general fund and other sources to accomplish many of the things that are talked about here. On the right of the screen, you have numbers in red. These are the estimated growth in assessed value, the revenues. The 2011 number is the current number. The $20 million is the current base EAV. The $68 million is the projected EAV increase, which would be about a 230% increase over the base as it is today, and that's assuming that all of these eight development projects that we hope to see develop will develop, and I have a strong belief and feeling that, in fact, most of that will occur. And then the last number, the $36 million, is the projected property tax increase. That means at the end of 23 years, $36 million of new revenue will be coming to all taxing districts, distributed to all taxing districts at the end of this district. So the bottom line is, if we're successful, this will quite easily outstrip any normal projected or even optimistic growth scenario that you might imagine for this area. In fact, as many of you also know, particularly in these economic times, we have been seeing in recent years declining assessed values. So that's it in a nutshell. Probably went actually a little longer than I wanted, but if there's any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we move on to Village Board comments, I'll just request that any written comments we've received, that the clerk make it a part of the record, so that'll go into the record tonight. And at this time, comments and questions from the Village Board?
Con, could you just tell the public what other communities in this area have used this mechanism?
Well, right off the top of my head, we have your neighbors, and pretty much, I had a map at one point, and pretty much all your neighbors, I think, have used TIF. I think is the last time I looked at, when we started this process, it was like Westmont was the hole in the donut, because literally everyone around you. Clarendon Hills, I know up in Ogden, they established one, Downers Grove for their downtown, and, you know, probably all the others as well, but specifics I can't remember.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments and discussion. So we would just ask that if you approach the podium, you please give your name and address for the clerk to make it a part of the record. So is there anyone from the public here that would like to comment on the proposed
Good evening. I guess I'll break the ice for everybody. My name is Grace Snyder Kubica. I am a resident, citizen, taxpayer, and I have a couple of questions on this TIF. One of my questions is on these buildings that are included in the TIF. Specifically, I'm talking about the area right at 63rd and Cass, the northwest corner, where there's a Westbrook Market and a laundromat. There are several vacant areas. Does the town plan to buy the buildings that are vacant? Is that how this works?
The village would not be necessarily purchasing that property. The idea is to stimulate retail and commercial development, so the hope would be that developers would come in and do that.
So you'd be advertising for developers or something?
We will be working.
Oh, well, that sounds like a good idea.
Thank you.
And what about the other areas that go down the way? For example, on Cass Avenue going north at 60th, there's a shopping center that is, oh my goodness, there's the Jockey Restaurant and not a whole lot else.
Ms. Kubica, that is.
Ms. Kubica, that is, that is, our gun turrets have been turned on that since this became a...
I know it's been empty a long time.
Well said. A little, this was merely an apple in our eye. What Mr. Conley had explained, when the map has the various areas, the northwest corner, it goes from 63rd and you're looking at the, yeah, if you'll put that map up so she can see it, that one right there, you will see that these parcels, we included that whole corner of where Westbrook Market is. It falls under dilapidated and it falls under all kinds of things, but...
Is the market owned by the market or is it rented?
No, it's rented. It has one property owner for that entire parcel, that entire shopping center. And the strip mall that's just north of it where Jackie Club is and the veterinarian and a paint store and not much else.
I think so.
And then across the street going north, which is the other strip mall where the plumbing supply is...
Yes, there's a little one there.
That's included. That's that brown rectangle up there.
Okay.
What the goal is, and when you say advertise for developers, developers in the state of Illinois and outside the state watch very closely for when municipalities approve TIF districts.
Uh huh.
What it means to them is they get a lot more bang for their buck.
Makes sense.
And so when this is approved, there are very few developers who have money to develop property that will not be aware of this, only because they have people that work for them that do nothing but watch these things. And they do all the market research. We don't have to do that either.
So in other words, the town won't have to buy any of these properties?
No.
No.
No. And if there was a question about the town buying them or taking them by eminent domain, no. This is, this is something that really sweetens the pot for developers to come in and say, okay, if I build this building and I'm gonna, if I buy this property and I tear this property down and I have to resurface and I have to, you know, do water retention and the county says I have to put in another stoplight two blocks down, because of the way that the district is set up, money spent then can come back to them to snowball in effect. So that they get, the money that they spend goes further and can be used for additional projects.
I see.
So this is, in the board's opinion, why we have been working on this and are very careful with it and, you know, spotlighted this to begin with, is this village needs such a shot in the arm and this huge piece of property is so tired and so misused and such an eyesore.
So is the one on 63rd Street, that's become a garbage dump, have you noticed?
Right.
Just sat.
And Tesk and Associates that have done this, you know, so have gone and looked at all the properties. And the only thing that I personally have gotten feedback on is people saying, you mean you'd get rid of the farm? Because that has so much history in town.
Oh, yeah. That would be tough.
So, but when you're looking, we don't, we're not going to have to advertise. We already have developers circling and we are hoping that with the economy getting a little better that we will have, we will have the impetus for people to start building it. And, you know, from my discussions, you've been in enough board meetings, my firm does a lot of TIF work, the lawyering in TIFs. We've seen a lot of towns and it really follows on the build it and they will come, that the first one to take advantage of our TIF, if this gets put into place, if they buy that corner or they buy the nine and a half acres and they build something, then all of a sudden you start to see the other ones come. And the perfect example is Bowling Brook Promenade. There was that horrid piece of property, put the promenade in, Bass Pro Shops went in. Then across the street, Meyer sat there by itself for a long time, but now they have Famous Dave's and they have Longhorn or whatever it is. But, you know, all of these properties...
It's immense, yes.
Got developed. And the other example is down at Route 83 and Plainfield, where they leveled that entire piece of property and they put in where Michael's is and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. And for a long time, it was struggling. Now, you're lucky if you can find a parking space and all those outlots are full.
Something they did not do well was the parking. They did a very bad job with their parking.
It's not a good design, but you know what? It's booming.
Pay, and it pays.
More shopping.
And it's making them a lot of money.
So I hope that by saying that, you understand this isn't something where we're going to be buying buildings and all of that.
This is it. And this concerned me in terms of putting the village in debt. Now, I'm not going to be here for 23 years and I don't have grandchildren that live in this town per se, but I know a lot of people in this town. And it's always been my thought that you leave the world better than where you, from whence you came. So I don't want to leave a big debt. I want it to be something that can be handled, that in fact, we're not, that we don't jump into something that we are over our heads, like so many people did with the house, with the home bubble, which was not all their fault.
But this doesn't do that.
This is ultimately self-funding.
Except the problem is the economy is not growing as fast as we would like it to. It's creeping. How long, this can just go on and on?
Which is why, well, this is why, you know, TIFs have a long life. The bigger, you know, some towns have TIF districts that are just huge, you know, former industrial properties that, you know, go on and on and on, you know, like how the stockyards used to be and train yards. But you can always end it sooner. Once, if everything comes in and it's developed, you can end the TIF. But as it sits now, if we don't go forward with this, it just deteriorates further and there is no, there's nothing that's going to improve that property without a TIF going in. Nothing.
How much do we still owe on the Lowe's property?
You mean on the nine and a half acres that's vacant?
I would ask our finance.
Ballpark.
We just looked at that.
Yeah.
Spencer, have you got a ballpark?
Yeah, we just...
We just had that. Glad he's not using his phone.
Yeah, you got a lot of numbers in there, I'm sure.
I do. Sorry. I will, I will get it.
One more thing, you don't anticipate buying any properties. If you do buy properties, will you be letting the public know before you buy these properties?
Yeah, I would think so, and we don't...
Oh, we voted on it.
As this board does, it sits, has no intention of buying anymore. And the vacant land, when, you know, before I was on the board, that piece of property was purchased and I was like, you know, what's the village doing and all that? And when I joined the board, it became clear to me as we developed the TIF district, there are certain uses of property based on zoning that require board approval, especially like downtown.
Oh, yeah.
And others that don't. With a huge piece of vacant property in a prime location on 63rd Street, by buying that property, it gave the village the opportunity to oversee what was going to go in. There was a long-range plan to that. Because if somebody else had come in and bought that property and just put what they wanted as a, that's a permitted use, they could have screwed up that whole, that whole parcel from Cass to Williams, the whole TIF district.
That's got a water problem too, so that has to be, that has to be...
Yeah, that'll be addressed because that's part of the conservation effort.
Yeah, we're on a blog.
So just to clarify, we've got about 1.3 million outstanding on it right now, so...
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grace. Do you have any other questions?
Not that I can think of, but I might.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, always good to see you, Grace.
Yep. Is there anybody else here from the public that would like to comment or ask a question? A familiar face.
Yes, I think you know who I am. For the record, Paul Watkis, board president, marker District 60, and also the chairman of the joint review board for this TIF. Just want to clear up one thing and to explain why the school board took the position that it did. When a TIF goes into place, it has the impact of having a tax burden shift. Anyone that's in the TIF or in the district, the school district for example, but outside of the TIF is going to pay more money when the TIF gets put into place. So it does have the impact of raising taxes for everyone that is in the TIF but, in the district, but outside of the TIF. And that was the concern that we had, and that's why we thought that the district that is originally proposed was too large. And I'm pleased that we were able to work that out and get it down to a little bit of a smaller size to reduce that tax burden shift. But on the other hand, a TIF is a good thing. It's a powerful tool that villages need to be able to use. I don't know who came up with it originally, but whoever they, whoever did, it's a brilliant idea. And in this case, I look forward to seeing what comes in the future here. So we're very pleased with how things worked out. I think it was a good compromise for everybody. It helped not only our district, but actually everybody that was in every taxing body that was in that TIF district. It helped all of their taxpayers as well. So I was pleased to see how that worked out and I look forward to seeing whatever you guys come up with in the future or whatever developer we have that comes here and puts something in there. Let's hope we get something along the lines of Burr Ridge Promenade or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that would like to comment?
I'm Betty Cardes and I own Jean's Tire Service. And I'm just wondering about existing businesses. Is there anything that we could expect from this at all? The last few years have been really rough and I have a few things that need doing at the building. Downers Grove did it and I'm just, just trying to find out if there's any way that we will be included in that TIF program.
Thank you. I think perhaps the consultant could maybe address that.
Absolutely. And it's a great question, one I tried to address earlier as well, but it is an important one, that TIF dollars are not only used to incentivize or to assist development, meaning to create new development, they can also be used in amending cases R and a lot of downtowns, probably Downers Grove and others, they use TIF dollars to do things like facade improvements, building improvements, fire, life safety improvements. I know a lot of the buildings in the area had various code issues. You could use the TIF money to improve the buildings to bring them up to code. The point of that is by assisting existing businesses, that also increases the value of the property, generates hopefully new sales and improves, you know, and improves the business.
Right.
And so while there's no, you know, specific program at this time, we have to wait till the, you know, the TIF district gets established, that is certainly a possible use of the TIF funds, that the village could set up a program, facade program, rehab program, whatever it might be, you know, to assist existing businesses. But that would have to be determined in the future.
In the future.
Yeah.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Tim Casey, marker District 60, board member for another three months, Southwestmont resident for 20-plus years. So I have a couple of questions for Con too. I want to make sure I understand this clearly. Part of what TIF funds can be used for are acquiring sites for development, correct? So it is possible that one of the first things the TIF could do when it gets funding is purchase the site currently owned by the village as part of acquiring land for a bigger purpose. They can do that.
I'm looking at following the question. You're saying...
Could the village sell its parcel to the TIF as part of a bigger plan to develop the site?
No.
Because right now, the village owns that site. I'm asking a question.
The TIF is not a...
The village owns it and the TIF is not a standalone entity. The TIF is just a mechanism for spurring redevelopment.
It's a different account where funds will be acquired, accrued over time to be used for projects, not to reimburse itself for something that's already been spent.
Okay. Okay. Secondly, and I want to expand a little bit on what Mr. Watkis said as far as a TIF being a tax transfer, I want to make sure people are really clear on this. It is not a tax increase per se, but all the taxing bodies in that area now have a smaller pool of properties to pull funds from to run their programs, whether it's the village or the park district or the high school districts, the community college districts, the township. They are all tax capped entities. So they get CPI or 5%, whichever is less each year, in additional tax dollars. So if there was a taxing group with 100 properties in it and 20 went into the TIF, that means each year they will be pulling their tax increase from 80 properties instead of 100. So is it a tax increase? Technically, no. Will each parcel, each homeowner, pay more each year to fund this TIF? The answer is yes. They have to for all the districts to do the programs they have. I am glad that the marker District 60 board and the village have been able to work out an agreement here. I think it's a fair agreement. I think it benefits all people, but I would caution one thing, that if this TIF is as successful as we all hope it will be, because there was nobody on our board in any of our discussions that said we don't want to develop Southwestmont. It was all about protecting our kids, that we have to educate and protecting our homeowners. So if this is successful and you redevelop that space and the shopping center, everything goes wonderfully in 15 years, whoever sits at this table, I hope will consider, if it is successful, ending the TIF early, paying off the bonds and returning the funds to the taxable entities that they belong to earlier. If this works, I understand why it's 23 years, and I will ask one more question. Does the village intend to take the tax stream that they're going to be earning from the TIF and issue bonds to pay for improvements upfront? I would assume yes. That's how this works, right? They're going to bond the tax stream or has that happened, Sid?
There's been no conversations that I'm aware of and generally we would encourage that they take a much more conservative approach, not issue bonds, because issuance of bonds has to be based on a revenue stream. Right now, there is no revenue stream. So I'm not sure why you would want to issue bonds on something we believe isn't going to happen yet. If a project shows up, we get a big box retailer or someone, we have a guaranteed revenue stream, that might be a reason to issue bonds. But right now, I don't know why there would be a reason to do it.
To do a lot of the work that you might need to do upfront with stoplights and water retention and widening 63rd Street.
Don't disagree. It would be, it would be an attractive way to go, but without a revenue source to fund it, the village would have to pledge a general...
Right, and that's not going to happen.
And then why would they do that?
No, there has to be something a little bit further along. But issuing the bonds to cover your upfront costs where you have tax dollars to back it would be the logical play if you have something lined up.
The way we would recommend most deals be done, in fact, we would recommend that development deals would be done on a pay-as-you-go system, so it'd be no bonding, so that the developer would only be reimbursed based on the income generated from his project. So that as dollars come into the TIF fund, the developer then gets the reimbursement, usually on a percentage basis. That would be the best scenario. I know all deals can't work that way if public improvements, you know, are into the millions of dollars and we may have to do some things upfront like stoplights, like street lighting. But again, generally, you know, based on a revenue source that we can pretty well not guarantee, at least be assured of.
Sure. Right.
And the village's history, unlike probably 98% of all the other municipalities, has never issued bonds.
Not once. No plans to.
Not in this town.
Well, I mean, with a revenue stream over 23 years, it's something they consider to finance the improvements you'll need to do upfront to attract people to come down there.
But see, the thing is, in some instances, like Con was explaining, that's putting the cart before the horse. Because like 63rd Street is county and I.D., okay? So we wouldn't even know what improvements would have to be made until we know what would go on the land. You know, certain things may not require an improvement. A different development, the county and I.D. might say, we want a light, we want a left turn lane, you know, we want a shoulder, all that. So we're certainly not going to do those improvements. Those are going to go hand in hand with a developer that comes in on a certain project. So we wouldn't do that upfront because those might not meet what the county would require.
Well, again, I just want to make it clear, nobody was opposed to development, but we have a lot of people right now that are making our lives to educate our children more difficult. our lives to educate our children more difficult. And I've heard you all talk about how fond you are of the state of Illinois, and they're certainly not helping us either. So it's something that we take very seriously to try and protect our tax base. Our kids go to Hinsdale Central and Downers North. They're going to have their hands full when they leave our district. So we have to do what we can to make sure they're prepared. And our kids do well. And, you know, it wasn't, wasn't really anything personal from the board. It was just something that we wanted to make sure we did what we could to protect the people we represent. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Is there anybody else? Anyone else at this point? Okay, at this point, we will go ahead and close, close the hearing to comments. And thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening, and thank you for coming in. This hearing is officially closed. Thank you. New business, final plat request. Kialas Crossing subdivision, 243 East 56th Street. Board to consider an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision. Request from McNauton Development to split one lot into nine lots of record at 246 East 56th Street. Doing a motion.
Mayor Protim, can we just hold for a couple minutes?
Good.
Give people a chance to, so they don't think they're interrupting us, they want to leave. And also, while we're waiting, I have a question. I thought the fire alarm issue was going to be on the agenda tonight.
Is it not?
It is.
It is. I saw it.
Oh.
There was a revised agenda that was issued today with that added back on it.
You have the old agenda.
Sprinkler ordinance?
Good catch. We don't have the right agenda. It was posted that way.
So it's on the line, put it tonight in here?
Yeah, so it's, so it was in the...
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's online, yeah.
Number H?
I don't have it on mine.
Or letter H? Okay, so it's right after the Burns and McDonald issue?
No. Before that, right after the Class 20 brewery...
Yeah, I thought it was before Steve May's presentation last Thursday.
Yes.
What was passed out on your desk tonight was the old agenda. It's updated. I've got the current version, and it's on there.
It's all about John.
You vote for all of it.
It's all about John.
It's who you know evidently.
What?
It's who you know.
Right.
Is there anything else we need to know?
Well, I think we should get clarification that the agenda that was posted includes that. I think Ron mentioned it was.
Yeah, it was posted that way. I saw it online.
It's just a few of us sitting at this U-shaped thing that didn't get it. Okay.
We don't need to know.
All right. Sorry, Mayor Protim Seneca.
Thank you, Trustee Emory.
Okay, I think we can move on. New business, letter A, on Kialas Crossing subdivision.
Second, Nero.
Any discussion or comments? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clavina.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seneca.
Yes. Greenleaf subdivision. Board to consider an ordinance approving a multi-party agreement for the completion of, of the subdivision improvements at the Greenleaf subdivision.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Fleming.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clavina.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seneca.
Yes. Comprehensive plan adoption. Board to consider an ordinance adapting the 2012 comprehensive plan for the Village of Westmont.
Motion to approve.
Should approve, Fleming?
Second, Emory.
Any discussion?
Long time coming.
Long time coming.
Thank you.
Now we use it.
Oh, yeah.
We want those pages curled, and it, we'll be looking through it so much. Roll call, please.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Clavina.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Holding up pretty good. Yeah, I agree. Standing ovation.
That's one.
Got it. One down. How many to go? Okay, we could maybe close the car. Class 4 liquor license saffron restaurant. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available Class 4 liquor licenses by one to accommodate a liquor license request from Akaguchi Incorporated, doing business as Saffron Restaurant, located at 6200 South Cass Avenue in Westmont.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes, and it's on the next agenda to...
Reduce.
Reduce one by one. Okay.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clavina.
Yes.
Thank you. Class 19 performing arts liquor license creation. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Retail Licenses, of the Village Code of Ordinances to allow for the creation of a Class 19 Performing Arts Liquor License classification. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Thank you. John, did you want to comment on this at all?
You know, no, other than the draft that you received on Thursday was revised per the discussion we had, and I emailed that to you this afternoon, and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clavina.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Thank you. Class 20 brewery liquor license creation. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Retail Licenses, of the Village Code of Ordinances to allow for the creation of a Class 20 Brewery Liquor License.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Just, I guess I should clarify, a revision was made to this ordinance, too, besides some minor rewording, in that the original draft required, I think it was, four high-top tables with four chairs at each table in the retail area where they can have tastings. The applicant contacted the village, I think it was today or over the weekend, and said, you know, "They're really not necessarily crazy about the high-top table idea. Made one of different configurations." So what we did was just limited it to no more than 16 chairs. They might do a long table, but no other major changes were made except for that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clavina.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Thank you. I would recommend that we just continue on, and then we'll do the sprinkler fire when he comes back. Is that okay with everyone?
When Ron comes back?
Well, we don't have it on our agenda.
It is on the agenda. You just don't have it on the agenda.
John, could she read it from yours?
I'll borrow his to read. I'll borrow. Sprinkler ordinance review. Board to consider an ordinance amending certain provisions of the municipal code and fire code regarding fire sprinkler and fire alarm requirements. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Emory.
Second, Fleming.
Any discussion?
Yep. Ready? Here we go.
Yep.
Well, the whole purpose that we've always had for Thursday to Monday's meeting, in this case, Tuesday meeting, is to think about things, and mull it over and consider it, and toss it around, and flip it upside down, and look at it inside and out. I've been on this board now going on 12 years. And out of that 12 years, six years, this has been on the docket. Six years it's been here. We've been a village that has been very cooperative. We have been over backwards on many occasions to take care of things and try to do the best that we can. We've tried to please everyone we can as we go. Unfortunately, after thinking about this, and listening to what the Fire Department had to say with a phase-in program which is available, and I understand what was said on Thursday night, but we're entitled to decide different things, at this point, I am in favor of having the date end, the end of June 2013. Now, that being said, with what the Fire Department stated, was that they have a phase-in program, that the properties that have not yet started would start their phase-in program, which would give them approximately a year, based on the size of the structures that these are going to have to go into, and the majority of them in the particular district. That was a program that's been available all along. We put a two-year moratorium on it, but we put the four years on it, and the two years was prior to the economy even going in the tank. So I've lived in this village for 28 years. I think highly of this village. And I find it rather unique, and I have to say, we haven't had a big fire in Westmont in 30 years. One of our own, Renee Reader's house, burnt over the weekend. Granted, it's a residential structure, but it burnt, and it is uninhabitable, it's going to have to be torn down. Now, if that went like that, and you don't have the proper protection in the district that we have, it's gone. So basically, what I'm proposing at this point in time is that we go ahead and continue with the ending date as it is. Those particular properties and businesses that are in question would be entitled to a phase-in program, which they can contact the Fire Department and work those issues out. Am I, am I correct, Chief?
That's correct, but, you know, I think we talked last week, too, and, you know, I mentioned to John that if we did the phase-in program, we would want some type of agreement of understanding with those individuals, that they will work towards the phase-in, and this is the completion date. I know John had said that if it wasn't complete by that date, that each day after that, there would be a...
7:55 fine. Well, basically, what I'm saying is, this gives them another year to stretch this out, and at the end of June of 2014, that's when the fine would go into, into play. The other reason I'm saying this, because you had a lot of businesses in this four-year period that put this equipment in their buildings, knowing that the deadline was coming. And some of those people haven't had businesses in this town a long time. So I guess my question is, to the older businesses, two of which I think should definitely want some kind of fire protection in their buildings, and I'll name them, Arco and the Uptown. Okay? One's a plumbing shop, who knows what kind of glues or whatever is in there, and the other one, we know how packed the Uptown is. So I'm saying, they're still going to get a year, but with the understanding is, they're going to get it done in a year, because that then turns into seven years. And we talk about moving slow and progressing? Come on.
So what's different tonight versus Thursday?
What I'm saying is...
We're still giving them until 2014?
No. They are going to have to sign a notice at the end of June that they are going to phase this in, okay? Other words, the dead-end date is still, but if we just say, "You have to put it in by 2014," then they can come back again and go, "Well, you know, I didn't have the money, didn't have the time," whatever. What we're saying is, that when the phase-in program goes into place, they're going to have to sign an understanding memorandum with the Fire Department, however it needs to be done, that they're going to start it, and it will be completed.
In the 2014 year.
Yeah. But it is, but it is on, but it is on paper.
No, 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 I understand it.
The difference is, we're making them start this June.
We're making them start this June.
Well...
And we're making them, we're making them say, not be able to come back and say, "Well, it's been a bad year, I wasn't able to do it, can we extend it again?" Okay? How many extensions...
No, 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 I don't think I have a big issue with this, starting at June of 2013.
Correct. They are going to have to sign...
But they haven't got it in by then, then 2000, June, whatever date it is, till, of this year, till June, I think we said 30th, too, Jen, that...
Right.
June 1st.
Okay.
The ordinance, I think it said that.
But the difference is, they have to sign a letter of understanding and memorandum that they are going to accomplish this, not just extend it to June 2014.
So hypothetically, I'm a business owner, and I sign this letter of agreement, or memorandum of understanding, or whatever we call it, saying, "I'm going to start this, I'm going to phase it in." But as a business owner, I choose to do it in one phase, and I'm going to start in May of 14. There's absolutely no problem with that, because I've signed saying, "I am going to do this." We also have teeth in the ordinance saying, you know, "You don't do this by, by then." You know, there's, you know, hefty fines that apply. I, I thought about this a lot over the weekend, and, and yes, a lot of people, you know, went out of their way to get these systems in, and, and probably gave up things, and took loans and everything else to comply. In fact, we have 88% of the entire village in compliance. But we had a lot of discussion tonight about bringing new business in. Well, I want to retain the businesses we have as well. And if this means going a little bit farther for them to help them with this, then I'm willing to do it. But I do think that June 30th of 14 is very reasonable, and I also think that this should be the last, you know, the last extension. So to me, whether or not they sign a letter of memorandum doesn't really make a difference, because they still have to get it done by June 30th of 2014, and if they do it in one phase or three phases, doesn't matter. It just has to be done.
Well, to add on to that, you've also got, that's what this board wants. We don't know what the next board's going to want. So whatever you want to put into it would be all well and good up until that time, but if June 1st comes around, and a new board sits there and says, "You know what? We're going to give them an extra year."
That's fine.
I mean, there's no guarantees.
If that's, if that's the case, then, as far as I'm concerned, June 30th, 2013's drop-dead date, period.
Um, last Thursday night, I went home and, my husband's a certified firefighter, which I forget that he is. And I walked in the house, and he looked at me, and in his loving way said to me, "Have you lost your mind?" And I said, "This is about the fire thing, isn't it?" And he said, "Yes." And he said, "88% of the..." So I know he's watching the meetings. 88% of the business owners...
Or reading your packet.
No, he's watching the meeting, because, you know, it became apparent. Took to heart the fact of why fire alarms are required in this town, and took to heart the actions of the village board in setting deadlines, and apparently 49% of the downtown businesses have thumbed their nose at the village, at their neighbors, at their tenants above their apartments, either above their own buildings or next door, where people sleeping at night don't stand a chance if there's not a fire alarm. And I remembered why four years ago I was not really happy about giving four-year extension on this. And Brant said to me, he said, "You know, the chief should have brought at least one of the videos they show us in firefighting school that shows, you know, whether it's the one where the lit cigarette is on the chair and how long it takes to become fully engulfed, you know, and depending on what's in the room, it's eight minutes before someone, even in full firefighting gear, cannot enter that room. And the next room, it might be three minutes." And nobody's paying attention to, you know, that kind of stuff, and... So I listened to him, because I have to, and I thought about it a lot over the weekend, and I got some calls and I got some visits from business owners and residents, and I happened to watch when the house behind the fire station went up on Saturday morning. And there were flames, you know, coming up out of the windows, and if anybody was on that second story, they didn't stand a chance. I cannot give people any more time to do what's right. The whole idea of two-year extension and then a four-year extension, it's like, how long do you have to sit here and roll the dice? If somebody wants to say, "But we haven't had a fire here in 30 years," well statistically, then we're about due. I don't want any part of standing on Cass Avenue about to go into Toon Funeral Home because somebody died in a fire that lives on Cass, and I don't want any part of standing on Cass Avenue looking at the burnout hull of what would take up an entire block. I don't want any part of that. I refuse to go any further. It's June 2013, and when we had a roomful of people, we all said, I remember Pat said, "You guys better start budgeting." We were all under the impression that people were paying attention to us, and they were listening, and they were understanding that we were stretching out this reluctantly and that there was a reason why we require fire alarms. That reason hasn't changed, and the fact that it's even longer that we don't have them, it becomes more exigent that we have them. I'm not willing to go beyond June 2013. Y'all have known it was coming. If you want to tell this board you can't afford the fire alarm, and we're not talking sprinklers, it's the simple fire alarm system. Does that mean you're not paying your liability insurance? Does that mean, and I am not pointing the finger at anyone, but I am asking, does that mean you're hoping the place will go up so you don't, you know, you can get the insurance for it? What is the reason to risk people's lives and livelihood because you've decided that six years wasn't enough time to come up with, what, $5,000 to protect your business? And Brant even said, he said, "Did they not hear Steve when he said his most important thing to him is his business, that he has worked so hard?" He said, "It's obvious Steve Nero protects his business. Why aren't these people willing to protect theirs? What's the reasoning?" Well, if they're not willing to protect theirs, I don't think this board should let them jeopardize the guy next door. And to have a gas station with fumes and a owner of a tavern with all of that alcohol and the plumbing that lord knows what solvents and everything else, it's the Westmont Molotov Cocktail that took the podium and said, "We don't want to put it in, extend it." I'm not willing to do it. The deadline's the deadline.
I have a question, then, because I am absolutely for deadlines, but since some feel the phase, could we put it as their phase one must start by June, and their final phase by the end of the year or something? In other words, we're still going to give those folks a chance, but in order for the chance to come, they have to show the initiative, and if they, you know, I don't want them to wait till May. I don't want any excuses. I don't know how many phases, if there's four phases, but they must show by June before the deadline, you know, I mean, that they've started phase, and they must complete it within the fire department's time span, however long you want this span to take.
Last Thursday night, we explained that most phases are done in a three-part phase.
In a three-part. And how far, how long in between each phase? Do you need two months, three months?
It's usually done in a three- or four-month part, depending on how long they want, it's done over a 12-month period.
I mean, if we're going to stay with, give them a chance with a phase, then I would say the phase must be started by June under their guidance.
So phase one in place and done by the end of June?
Yep, they have to show something to the fire department, whether, you know, I mean, if the developer or whoever's doing their work, if they're busy, they got to show that they have a contract or something started, work with the fire department, and then we'll leave it up to the fire department to tell us. If they're not going ahead with it, then they can contact the code enforcer and start the, you know, charging them per day. But if they think, but if this means that they'll all be within, all their three stages will be done in, what, four months? Three months?
The three stages usually is put out over a year, 12 months.
So it is a year for the three.
So usually the first phase is done within the first month, the four months out, and the next phase between the fifth month and the eighth.
If they go by phases, then it's going to be up to the fire department. If they miss phase two, they start it.
So like first phase by the end of June, which is the, what was the deadline for everything, second phase by the end of the year, third and/or fourth, final phase by June of 2014.
And if they miss the phase, they go to the code enforcer and they start the fines?
Chief, what does the first phase consist of, component-wise? I'm just curious.
The first phase is probably, like Larry explained, the most expensive part of the phase, and that's the panel itself.
Which is out of a $5,000 system, typically how much? Just a rough estimate.
The percentage of the total cost, estimate?
You know, I would think that the percentage of the total is probably about 60%, 50 to 60% of the cost. You know, the other two phases are putting in the smoke or the heat detectors, you know, so then we do get an activation, and then the other, the last phase is just putting in the pole station or the horns with the lights.
So they put in the first stage, you don't have to start paying that monitoring fee right away?
And the other thing is, is that they can lease the systems, so that option is out there, too. They don't have to pay for the full. They can have it installed, and it can be a lease from whatever company that they choose to do it.
Sure.
As long as it's monitored, too.
And as long as we're, you know, explaining things, want to make sure that we don't forget that there's three parts to this, the fire alarm, the wireless, and the sprinklers. And the wireless has to coincide with the alarm, and as you know, that needs to fall in line with the alarm.
Right.
We also have those businesses that have alarms already put in but are not wireless, and we want to make sure that by June 2014 that all of them are hooked to the wireless right into our dispatch center.
Yeah, because the only thing that we were looking at, an indefinite kick, was the sprinklers.
Right.
Which was the third thing, but I think without saying it succinctly, at least, my understanding was it was the alarms and the wireless together.
Yep.
I mean, that's up to how, if we do the phasing, that's what I would do, is force the phasing to start, and then leave teeth up to the chief, and if they pull away...
I still say, though, ordinance violation, whatever we put in place, you have the teeth of 7:50 a day. That's the maximum we can do under state law for an ordinance violation.
Well, you know, and the other thing is, and to Trustee Scott's comment, future board can do whatever they want, I would hope that any future board members who would come and sit here would take human life and property value into account in making a decision.
So do I.
You know?
Yeah.
So I guess the question is...
We've all been disappointed before.
I'm sorry?
We've all been disappointed before, so there's no guarantee on that.
Well, I know there's no guarantee, there's no guarantees in anything.
I'll be at the podium every dang Thursday open forum.
That'd be enough to get the...
Yeah, that'll do it.
Because you have to remember, just because some of us are not going to be here...
I understand.
It doesn't mean that we're not going to be around. I guess the question is, can an ordinance be put into place stating that they have to start this project by the end of June this year?
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance would state that you must comply by June 30th of 2013, unless you enter into a memorandum of understanding with the fire department agreeing to phase in with each phase completed by a certain date, and what I need to know, so we can put this together, is the chief said this is phased in every three months is a phase, right? Four phases?
Three.
Or is it three phases?
Usually three phases every four months.
Okay. So, do you want to give the property owners or businesses the additional, technically, you want the first phase to be complete by June 30th?
Yes.
How could you do that if you're going to have it every four months?
Well, we don't have to do it four months. It's typical, we're saying six months for two and three. By June, then the end of the year, then June 2014.
So you still have some that could have it in effect by the deadline?
Sure.
That's a possibility.
Potentially.
At that point there, they would have the one year and have to do it in a phase-in. You're almost forcing them into a phase-in at that point there.
Right.
Unless they want to halfway through it and then decide to pay for it all and get it finished.
Do it.
And in a lot of cases, they'd probably be smarter off leasing the system and have it done all at one time.
I think I would have rather preferred if we had gone with them, give them the first four months to get number one done, and then at the end, it's finished, but...
They haven't shown any initiative, 49% of downtown, to spend dime one to get it done, so apparently we're going to have to push them.
The ordinance that was drafted is going to need some revisions, and I'd like to get a memorandum of understanding that we're going to use also prepared. We certainly have the right to, you guys vote on this tonight, and amend the ordinance that was drafted to conform with what your direction is, in case law says that's perfectly legal, or if you want to see it and have the chief see it, and which is actually my preference, is to make sure we get this right the first time, take the additional time to draft the ordinance right.
And have it on the next...
On the 28th.
I agree, too, because we are switching what we discussed on Thursday.
Yeah, it gives everybody a chance.
And I feel a little more comfortable making it public that everybody knows what the decision is.
And they can come and talk again.
I think the public was hearing, assumed there might be one way, and all of a sudden...
Right, and then we kind of tweaked it.
There's a little bit of a right turn in there.
The question I have is, you know, we're talking 12% of the businesses would have to get this letter, get this, I mean, do we have the staff? Do we have the time? I mean, we can't just pick and choose who we give this option to, we have to give it to 12% of the businesses in this town. So how do we orchestrate that, and do we have time to do that?
Yeah, we'll be able to handle that.
Okay.
We'll make that happen. We got all the businesses that do not have any alarms in now, we contacted all of them, delivered them a courtesy letter in January to remind them that it was coming up this June.
Great.
John, one of the things in the ordinance, and I've noticed it in the other ordinance since we share Downers Grove, we say connected to the Westmont Dispatch Center. I was just off the top of my head thinking maybe it should say Westmont's Dispatch, so if we switch to somebody else's, we don't have to re-change an ordinance.
Right, I think that was carried over from the 2009 ordinance.
Yeah, it was, so if we could make sure that's...
Or Westmont's designated dispatch center.
Yeah.
Keep it generic, so we don't have to change if something happens.
That's a good point.
So if we need a motion to postpone this?
Okay, so, yes, do we need now a motion to postpone?
Correct.
So moved, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Roll call?
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sinica?
Yes. Engineering Services Agreement Burns and McDonald. Board to consider an ordinance approving a proposal from Burns and McDonald for the Phase Two Engineering Design Services for the Willmet Avenue Reconstruction Project, MFT number 12-00101-00-PV. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming? Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee, Mayor Pro Tim Sinica?
Yes.
Engineering Services Agreement Strand Associates. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement from Strand Associates for Phase Two Engineering Design for the Jamestown Oakwood Subdivision Detention Basin Repair Project. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Emory. Any discussion or questions? Roll call?
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sinica?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?